Five o'clock, but we have one member still.
I'm gonna be here. He's gone. He's not here. On vacation.
He had a vacation. So, uh, am I ready? Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to July the twenty-second of year two thousand twenty-four. And, uh, we're playing our common council to order, uh, here in Scottsburg, Indiana. And then we begin by prayer and then a pledge of allegiance. Sam, I'll pray. I love you more than Jesus. Father, we bow before you to thank you for a day you've given to us, father of life itself. Father, each day is as a bridegroom coming out of his chamber to live that day and to shine forth. There's been many things that's happened, both good and bad. Many have been born and many have died. So, Father, there's been both joy and great grief. But it's been a day that you are in control. We thank you for your presence. We prayed for your presence here this evening. I prayed for these councilmen who have been elected and Jan and myself, Father, that, that we, that we, we treat these positions as, as positions of servitude for the people. Father, that we're here to serve them and to find out what problems and issues they have and, and to help correct those things to, to the best of our ability by your hand and your, your guidance, Father. We love you and we praise you. Be with us this evening. Give us peace in his lands, Father, and joy and, and, and content with you. Jesus, and we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you also very much. Jesus. Our next point on the agenda is our rule call. Our first question, Jan Hart.
Mary Amy.
Here.
Tim Hall.
Here.
Rick Cozart.
Here.
Kevin Smallwood.
Here.
Mark Mankelson.
Here.
Richie Barton.
Thank you, Jan. Richie Barton is one that has been, uh, who replaced, uh, Christian Evans in this place. So, if you're not saying, used to say that or don't know that, that's what has happened and he's not here this evening. So, we will go forward with the next agenda item, which is approval of the amendments to June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. We are, if you read through your minutes, we'll accept an offer to present them as, as given.
I'll make motion to accept them as given.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kevin's next motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Your second. Any questions, comments, concerns, any titles in English like this you see? Bring it up on your CI.
Hi, I'm.
Proposed unanimous. Thank you very much. Next thing is new business. We have our agenda this evening. Heritage Engineering. This is Bob and, uh...
Bob Bruceley, Jeremy Edgar.
Jeremy.
I'm Bob Bruceley and I'm gonna...
All right, Bob. Well, that's good. Yeah, I brought the paper for you. Sorry. Thank you. Engineer here. It's always good to see you. Thank you very much for coming all this way. All right, and we have extra copies if, if you need them. So, Mayor, where do you want me to stand?
Yeah.
That's good. Where do you want this back?
Yeah.
All right, I don't want my back to be anyone. Uh, so I'm Bob Bruceley with Heritage Engineering. Jeremy Edgar, uh, also with Heritage is here tonight. We've been working with, uh, with the city for some time now on responding to, uh, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management's designation of an MS four community for Scottsburg. So, a couple of years ago, they sent notice to the city saying you've been designated as a MS four, which is a municipal separate storm sewer system. Now, meaning that, uh, you've been bumped up on their list of trying to, uh, mitigate stormwater quality. They're, they're more concerned with quality, uh, keeping creeks clean, keeping pollutants out, things like that, the streaming. So, more about water quality and protection of the waterways. What I've given you, and I won't go into this in a lot of detail, but Bob, me, and your answer, any questions you have. Just wanted to walk you through what that looks like and what the end result's gonna be. So, the end result is we'd like you to consider forming a stormwater utility, and I'm gonna explain how that works. Uh, it's just like any other utility, whether it be sewer or water or whatever, gas or anything, electric, any utility. First off, and in your packet, you're gonna see several attachments. Um, I'll go through you to those here in just a second. Jeremy, chime in if I keep up and miss anything. Uh, the first item though is just, just a summary of what we're gonna go over tonight. Come here, I'll try to keep this brief. I know, I respect your time. I don't wanna keep you all night here.
You're good.
Uh, but first thing is, so MS four designation, as I mentioned, back in April of twenty-two, that's when the city received a letter notifying them of this designation. And they, they allow you lots of time to get your house in order, so to speak. So, there's a, if you go, there's an appendix A, which is the very first thing under, that's that letter that you receive. Right after that, you're gonna see an appendix B, which is a checklist of items that we have, uh, began checking off the list and sending them to IDM. Some things are very simple. Some things are just tell us, uh, tell us about your system. Give us a map of your system. Give us a map of your city. Give us, give us these things. The, the reason you're, you were designated to MS four is they have population criteria. And I don't wanna pretend to know the formula. If you're, you don't qualify this way, but if you're over ten thousand, you're on vaginal qual. But if you're between seven and ten, which is kind of in that sweet spot, you qual, you can qualify based on, um, a, 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 a formula they use for population density. Plus your contiguous to other metropolitan areas. So, they're throwing me in for that. I'm not trying to say that to scare you because all it is is there's a whole reporting and a program you have to develop. And that's what we're walking through tonight, is what's that program look like. So, that's, uh, the MS four designation and where we are to date with it. So, where we are to date is we've developed a stormwater quality management plan. We've, we've identified some good housekeeping measures. Um, for example, if you have a spill at the public warehouse garage or if the wastewater treatment plant, how do you handle it? What do you do? How do you keep it from going into the waterway? If it does go into the waterway, what do you do? Who do you notify? Who do you call first? Those kind of things. So, we've identified that. Today, your current stormwater reviews, so if, if I'm a developer and I hired an engineer to design and set planes and I turn them in, do those turn them in? You turn them into, uh, Scottstown Soil and Water. They review for pretty much only the erosion control points. So, they're only looking at make sure you have your self-defense and your construction and those things. They do review that. They, that's, that's how, that goes under scrutiny. What they're not really supposed to look for, and they're not, they're not doing anything wrong, they're not taking a deep dive into the design elements of the detention basin that's going in and the other control structures that are going in for water quantity. They're looking at water quality. We wanna look at water quantity because we don't want a new development to come in and the residents downstream flood because we have some of that now. Or you don't want a new development to go in and the infrastructure they put in doesn't hold up, doesn't work the way it was supposed to. You gotta, you inherited that till they walk away. Uh, so that's part of, uh, what we're gonna get a process developed for. But today, it goes to soil and water. They have a fee that the developer pays or the applicant pays. They review it. They sign off on it after they reviewed it and agree to all the elements, give it back to the developer. The developer can then proceed, uh, to put in those items and it gets inspected by soil water, just for those, uh, erosion control items. Uh, what, we're gonna try to develop standards that are more stringent, uh, not trying to dissuade development. We just wanna make sure that the elements that go and get put in are the correct, that, that it's sized properly, the pipes are the right materials, uh, the roads are getting put in the way they should so that we don't have any drainage causing road wash outs and things like that. So, it, it's more of a protection measure. It's what your other communities are doing around you and we're trying to, to implement some of that. And give some enforcement action because today you really don't have the teeth of saying, you didn't put it into our standards. Well, we don't really have a standard. So, we're kinda, you know, we're trying, trying to make sure we have some enforcement. Uh, there are, I don't want people to think in the audience that it's just the wild, wild west. It's not. There are minimum standards that have to meet. So, even though you don't have any, you don't have an ordinance, the state does. The state has some minimum guidelines they have to meet. As an example, when they put in a detention basin, uh, they call it, there's things, and I won't dive into this unless you have questions. There's pre-developed flow and post-developed flow. Pre-developed is before they touch the ground. It's tree, it's grass, it's soft surfaces. Post-developed is after they put the asphalt down, the sidewalks, buildings, you get increased runoff. So, the state says, hey, you have to hold back water at a fifty-year post-development amount and only release it at the ten-year design storm level pre-developed. So, they do make you hold back water. It's not like, like I said, I don't want people to think, well, they're not doing anything, that's why we're getting flooding. No, there are minimum design guidelines. They do have to hear those. We'd like to throw a few other things in there, some best management practices they need to follow. So, we're not reinventing the wheel, but... Okay, so, developing a stormwater program, which is developing a utility. Uh, we've, the way to do that, and I'm about midway down here where it's a stormwater program. The goal at the end of this is to, is to get to a stormwater utility. What's that utility's purpose? One is to administer your program, meaning all the reporting requirements that I didn't want you to meet. They wanna make sure you have these rules and regulations and ordinances in place and that you are going out and you're monitoring your creeks and your streams and your waterways. Uh, you're not letting, um, oils, uh, go down a drain and go straight to a creek and have aquatic life that gets damaged or killed. You're, you're, you're taking care of the, uh, any industry or business. They have practices in place. They may have to have old water separators in place so that parking lots don't, you know, cars leak oil. They wanna make sure that, that gets cleaned before it goes into the channel. So, that's part of the program. The second part of the utility is projects. Doing stormwater projects and water maintenance, uh, of existing stormwater systems. So, that's the two, two big pieces of stormwater utility. Get your program, manage your projects. Uh, how do you fund it? And that's the big, big, big item. I know you've had some bunch of discussions and whatnot. Uh, you fund it through a stormwater fee, but it's a user fee. So, it is a new fee or a fee that residents, uh, property owners pay to be a part of this, to be within the city that has a stormwater utility. Uh, it's based on, and I, and I'm not talking word for word on this, no, you can read this. So, it's based on what we call equivalent dwelling units. The fee is gonna have to cover two things. It's gonna cover your program, it, how, what's it gonna take to run the program, and then what's it gonna take to do projects? So, generally speaking of projects, you, you, you don't have a fee sufficient to where you just fund it all in cash. You would bond, you'd use that to bond projects so you can do those overseers in years because otherwise you'd never get to anything. You build up enough money, wipe it out on one project. You build up money, then you wipe it out on projects. I'm trying to spread that out. So, it's based on an equivalent dwelling unit. An equivalent dwelling unit is a residential unit. So, one residential unit equals one equivalent dwelling unit. Residents generally, anywhere you look at, you look at Clarksville, you look at Jeffersonville, you look at Floyd County, you look at all, you look at all the surrounding communities. The residentially zoned properties generally always pay the same amount regardless of, pick on you. You have a thousand-foot square house and you have a two-thousand-foot square house. Doesn't matter. You're both residential zones and you pay the same because it's a blended residential rate. And that's how we come up with the equivalent dwelling unit amount. In your case, we've, we've taken a, a smattering of properties and we still have to refine this a little bit, but we've came up with an equivalent dwelling unit that's thirty-one hundred square feet. And that's not the size of the house. That's the impervious area of the property. So, that, what's impervious area, that's your hard surface, rooftops, uh, driveways, sidewalks, patios. You add all that up, on average, about three thousand square feet, thirty-one hundred square feet total for, for a residential property. We're gonna tweak that, but that's roughly about where you're gonna land is what we've looked at. Uh, so, what's that mean? That means everybody that's zoned residential will pay the same. If you're not zoned residential, anything other than residential, you pay a factor based on your actual impervious area. So, let's say the impervious area was three thousand square feet. And I've got a commercial property that's, has an impervious calculation of nine thousand square feet. That's a factor of three. Three times three thousand equals nine thousand. So, whatever the rate would be, you'd multiply that three for the commercial. So, if a single-family residence is paying three dollars a month, and I'll, and I'll give you some examples on what the rates are around you, three dollars a month, then that commercial in that example would pay nine dollars a month. That makes sense. So, that's, that's how everybody does this fee. That's how you generate, uh, the revenue that you're gonna need to, to fund it. Other communities, you can repay us three dollars. Other communities around us, that, I'm a Floyd County owner, and in Floyd County, we pay three dollars. I think I was paying, yeah, I'm still paying three twenty-five. It didn't go up. It's gonna go up probably next year considering, but by now I'm paying three twenty-five a month because I'm residentially, so... Uh, Jeffersonville's about the same. It's in the three to four dollars. All, all other are about the three to four dollars. Some are higher. I think Clarksville now is over seven. They're a little bit of an outlier, but most are three to four. You might get one to bump up a little bit, but that's, you're gonna be in that ballpark when it's all said and done. The way you calculate that though, and I'll, I'll loop to it here, is how do you calculate that fee? You calculate it based on your two components I mentioned. What's it gonna cost for my program? And I've given you a, a very high-level budget in your packet. Uh, what's that cost? And then what's it cost to fund the projects? So, we're gonna leave you with some homework that we're gonna talk about here. I'm glad everybody's happy to hear that. But, uh, we're gonna leave you with some homework so that we can get input because the biggest thing we want, uh, before anything happens with any fees or any utility is you want public input. Uh, so, but thank you here. And, and by the way, I, I served as a town engineer for Georgetown, Indiana. I've been a town engineer for, oh, gosh, longer than I probably want to, I think, two thousand and six or something like that. Been a while. Two thousand and five. Been a while. So, my memory goes, it's been, it's been a few years. So, uh, we have, we, we are going through the same process of looking at our fee again and seeing, do we need to make some modifications to it? But those are the two pieces that make up your fee. It's your running your program, running your program, and then how, how many projects do we want? How many, what's the, what's the baseline projects we have now? In other words, we know, we, we're, we have some known, uh, drainage problems today. There's some we may not know about, and that's why we want property owner input because not everybody knows about every problem. Somebody's gonna come to say, yeah, we've had this flooding, blah, 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 blah. Nobody's ever come out and looked at it. We'd like you to make your aware. And then what do we wanna budget for in the future? So, you're not trying to cover everything, but you're, you're trying to say, we think we can fund X amount of projects a year on our fee. And the way to get to that is, uh, we wanna leverage the rate we're pulling in to borrow the money to do it, and that, that pays that bond, pays that number. So, uh, so, one last thing and then I'm gonna let you ask questions. So, in your, at the end of your packet, you're gonna see maps. I wouldn't be an engineer if we didn't bring maps. We like maps. So, you're gonna see all these maps. Uh, one's just an overall map, but then each of them, there's district maps in there too. So, hopefully your district would be highlighted on one of those maps. And the first one's the overall, and I mean, she got to that, she could see District one, District two, and so on. Okay? So, what we'd like you to do, uh, and not tonight, but when you, at your leisure, if you could take and go through your district, dirt, or other districts, you can do any place. I'm not gonna limit it to that district. But if you could say, did you think about this? Do you know about this? Do you know about this project, uh, drainage problem? Uh, we have identified a few things on here we're aware of. For example, High Street Drainage Project, right here on the first page. Uh, we're aware of that. We're aware of this problem. We're aware of a problem on Walnut Street, which, by the way, we'll talk about that, that, uh, what we called the park. So, we're aware of some, but we know there's others. I mean, there's, no doubt, there's other issues out there. Uh, we, we weren't trying to identify all these immediately, but we do want input. I mean, the key is getting as much input as possible. Uh, because the better the data we have going in, the better job we can all do as a team to pull together some real numbers so that we're not just saying, well, we think it's gonna be four, but we're gonna make it four twenty-five. Or we think it's gonna be three, but we're gonna make it three fifty-five. No, we wanna know, how did we get there? How did we get to that number? We don't wanna just pull the number off the wall. So, I'm gonna stop for a minute because I've probably overwhelmed you with information there. Is that too much info at this time, Mayor? Is that enough?
Uh, no, you're, you're doing well. Let me just, uh, let me just explain to you guys, in April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, that we did see this from I D M.
Right. There's a copy in the packet.
Copy in your packet. You're gonna see that in there, that where this is not something that we choose to do, this is something we're being made to do. And, and Scottsburg has not had, we, we really haven't had a stormwater program. When I came in office, I, we began, uh, right off, trying to identify some areas that are what I would call our, you know, most urgent. We have places in town that on a, a heavy rain, your, up your ankles are better in water. So, uh, we have corrected some. We have corrected some, but we have, we have hired, uh, Heritage Engineering and, and they are, uh, they're very good in stormwater and areas leading folks. And, uh, to go over this, we will end up with an entire plan for the entire city. And, and, and so, just to give you an idea of what's going on, uh, we have, uh, we, we remedied several, like I said, but we still have a lot to go.
Yeah, and Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't add enough. Uh, Mayor's correct. So, that's when the city was notified. So, I D M's, and I glossed over this probably too much. I D M is, is focused, they really wanna protect the waterways. It's, it's all about protection of the waterways. Uh, the, the secondary component of that is the quantity of water because it kinda goes hand in hand. If you can't control the quantity, uh, because you're not gonna, the, the volume of water ain't going away. So, once you develop it, that water is there. How do you mitigate it? How do you control it? How do you make sure it doesn't cause erosion downstream? Then start just blowing your channels out and your creek backs and all that, you get a lot of erosion. So, that's why they come into these municipal areas in the, in the, in the, in the more populated centers of, of the parts of the state and say, look, we're gonna put rules and regs on you to police this. We're gonna give you some guidelines, but you have to police it. Uh, if you don't, uh, you're gonna have penalties and that you're not gonna qualify for certain drains. You're not gonna qualify for certain things. So, they, they're making you do the policing part, but they don't have to say that to you as well. Uh, so, it's like anything else, they kinda move it down the line and let the local units battle, at least handle it. Uh, and that's the last thing you want to, if you don't want the state to walk in and just say, here's your fee, here's your number. Hey, uh, no, we're gonna do our own thing. So, we're trying to do our best with that. So, I just wanted to piggyback on what you're...
Yeah, and the city's identifying, these, these are, these are areas that we've already given, the areas, uh, half of those, these is Lover's Lane, uh, Larry Lane, Hopeless Drive, Hidden Meadows, Walnut Street, High Street. Both of those are, are in the eastern part of the city. Uh, over where, over by where Neil's at, there's, there's areas there as well, back line where his house is at. So, we have multiple areas in the city to identify and then line up to be able to correct. So, as you can see, this is, this is not going to be a short drive. Overall, this is gonna be a long drive.
Yeah. This isn't a twelve-month thing.
No, this could be a twenty-year thing.
Yeah, that's a big picture. Some will, will let themselves, if, if I may, Mayor, uh, some will let themselves to, uh, combining them with, say, a roadway project. So, if you have a roadway project that you can justify spending, uh, some road dollars at the same time because it's tied to the road. Like, let's say you needed new storm culverts along the road or under the road. You can use those dollars for that. Once it gets outside of that though, you, you have to have separate fees. You can't, you can't just use road dollars for, for drainage. It has to be tied to road. But we'll look for opportunities like that. We'll look, we'll look for the grant opportunities that are out there. Any other things we can uncover to help leverage, uh, and extend any dollars that you're gonna spend, you know, try to take advantage of that, so...
As in your districts, we're asking you, you guys, to go through your districts and try to help identify things for us. Uh, maybe we've missed it. Maybe we, you know, if you have folks coming to you saying, hey, I've got a bad water issue here. So, bring those to us. We in turn will give those, uh, to Heritage Engineering and, uh, and begin our, uh, correction of, of many of these things.
Yeah, and, and the thought would be, and this would be my recommendation to, to you if you wanna consider this, is once we get your feedback, we'll compile everything, we'll get it cleaned up, we'll get it, we'll get it on the map, and then we'll have workshops with, with the public. And we'll ask them to come in and we'll have, we'll have bigger versions of these maps. This has been successful in other communities, but I mean, where you ask them, come up, hey, let's talk one-on-one, let's, let's show us where your problem is. We wanna know because we don't wanna pretend to know all of them. We, we, we need feedback. And then come back again and you start to prioritize them. Because, uh, you always have, the, the way we've always done it is you look at life sa, life, health, safety issues. So, okay, first of all, is it causing, is, is it a safety issue? Is it causing property damage? You go all the way down the line and so you have nuisance water, it's like, mm, okay, it stands for a day or two, not causing any damage. All the way up to, no, I've got flooding, it's getting in my basement, it's doing this, it's doing that, flooding the road, big issues. So, you weigh those out, you know, you're not, you just gotta put priorities on them.
If, if you go out to Moon Glow one and two, it's soon to be three, you'll see, you go all the way to the very end, uh, on the western side of Moon Glow and go up, and you go down through those houses, you'll see where there's not been anything, it's been done. And all of that has, has been voted out. You see, there's some guys that put in riprap and weeds are all going with the riprap. And it's not, it's not been, now, if you kill them, when we first come in, where we did Moon Glow was one here, we actually, actually began, uh, in that area. So, you're gonna go out there and you're gonna see large areas that would take the water with the weeds in it and handle that. We've handled the water, they're putting ons to, uh, the Hampton Oaks folks over there because that was all running over there. Them and those folks were up to their shins almost in water with, with the large area. It's not now. It's all going into ritigmas. That's all been, uh, remediated in those areas. Uh, we have hired, uh, Josh Hillman as well. Josh Hillman is a, is a municipal engineer and he's on a contracted basis, but he and, and Bobby work real well together. Uh, they know each other, so, uh, you know, we get input on both of these areas. So, uh, but that's...
We challenge, we challenge each other.
Yes, 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 yes.
It's good. It's good. It's constructive.
It is good just to bounce things off each other.
No, it's good.
So, uh, you're just gonna see Jeremy here, he's a big tall guy.
Yeah.
You see him search out a lot and, uh, that's what he's doing is, is coming up. We have several things that's being bid right now. The Walnut Street is being bid right now. That's down where Mike Stevens lives. That's, that's a very, an area there. Also, if you go down Second Street North, down to High Street, where we have a Pocket Park, a Pocket Park there. Uh, that whole, that whole ditch going over to Third Street, we're redoing all of that as well, probably even the culvert that's in there. So, uh, those are things that are currently going on, that are currently being bid now. So, uh, uh, we have put in some areas over in Lover's Lane, where we're trying to take the water from Larry Lane to get it over into, uh, the property that the city owns. The, that property will go through a, uh, a transition as well, where we will have areas that all that water will go into, then meter, meter into the creeks at a, at a, at a rate that it can take. And, you know, so a lot of things going on here. I have Chase Harden here. Chase, I don't want, he's got his hands full down with wastewater, but he's not gonna be our, our guy on this thing. But at the end of the day, Chase kinda has his, his hand on it as well, just to keep the phone on the pulse, as it were. And Chase, what do you have for this?
I have nothing, big enough.
Well, you provide some good input along the way though. So, it's, it's helped having your, your, your knowledge and input on it. So, I really, uh, you're right.
Chase is a class four operator, highest class you get in the state of Indiana. And, uh, and he has personally, when we had to redo the plant, uh, we were given a plant that was an oxidation ditch. But, but, you know, what we had was, was it... but, but, you know, what we had was, was it continues to batch reactor plants. So, when we went, when we were gonna go that way, uh, we were not gonna be able to re-use anything we had. So, we ended up going with what we call a, a sequence batch reactor. And Chase has gone to half a dozen plants and picked out this, this, I want this one for this plant, I like, I like this one over here. He's put all these things together today, Scottsburg is one of the leading cities in, in the state for our wastewater treatment plant, so...
And they kinda piggyback, those kinda piggyback into the stormwater, 'cause they're also looking, 'cause they discharge to a river, to a stream, you know, so...
Yeah, and this is not, we're not a city that has a combination storm and drain.
Right, that's why this is S four, separate storm sewer system, it's not combined with your center. So, those are called combined sewers, you don't, you don't have that, um, sorry, Mayor, let me try.
No, we, we, no, we don't, we don't have that, as a matter of fact, we're doing everything we can, we're spending thousands and thousands of dollars to, to line our, our, our...
Keep the water out.
Keep the water out, not to line our sewer lines, to keep the water out of there. So, we've probably, they line now over five miles, probably close to thirty thousand feet, uh, in line. And, these are, these are clay tiles that are seventy, eighty years old, they're a little cracked and leaking. So, we continue with that, we, we have a, another million dollar, uh, grant now we received that we're lucky with lining here, so, so...
Yeah, Mayor, if I can too, in, in your, and I didn't, uh, sorry, I haven't dived into it, in your package, I figured after the reading, you'll have time to dive into it. We also put together, uh, what a stormwater coordinator's position would look like, so, 'cause obviously, the mayor just alluded to that, the fact that the staffing you have are fairly fully utilized in what they're doing. So, this, this would likely necessitate the need for a stormwater coordinator. So, we've put together the draft of what that position would look like. So, you'll see it in there, that has, that's just for you to review and think about it. Well, what about this? Why wouldn't they do this, or why wouldn't this person in there do this? So, think about that once you, once you read through it, so that, that's all in there. Try to give you everything, from soup to nuts, um, the whole, the whole piece of it, so. I hope I didn't go too long or too short, or what's your, what's your...
But, but our dates, our dates are here, that we, we have to perform. And, uh, you know, on that, I wanna tell you one thing, I was elected in two thousand nineteen, I got called, the week after I was elected, hadn't even taken office yet, and it was called my end, and they said, uh, we wanna see you on December the sixth at nine a.m., we'd be bringing in a term. And we don't want calls like that on this.
That's right, and, and the mayor confirmed this schedule. So, coming up in September, we, we have a, a series of things we have to submit to I.D.M. or make them aware of, if we can't hit that date, why can't we hit it, and when will we hit it? So, they're, they're, they'll work with us, they're not, I mean, these are, these are dates they expect us to hit, uh, but if, if there's a reason. Some of these are, are, are somewhat a little hanging fruit, I'll say. Uh, some of these are the I.D.D.E. plan, listed discharge elimination. It's, what you're looking at is, uh, for example, if you go out, where you don't have much rain, and the creeks and your streams are drowned, and you've got asphalt stormwater coming into it, stormwater locations where the flow will come into it. And if it's been dry for a week, and you've got a lot of flow coming in to that creek, you gotta know what, where's it coming from. Could be totally acceptable, it could be from a cooling tower, it could be from something you know about, that you gotta know about it, you gotta know what's in that water. If it's clean water, that's bad, it could be flushing fire hydrants, could be the fire department, well, yep, we know about it, flush fire hydrants, we documented. So, that, that's some of the things coming up in September. There is a stormwater ordinance, that ordinance, uh, can have two parts to it. So, in September, we're not saying, I don't want you to mistake in this to think, by September, you have a stormwater utility set up, that, that's not at all what this is saying. This is saying you're gonna have a stormwater ordinance in place that's going to talk about, what are the rules that you're gonna follow for stormwater, one of which will be, we're going to set up a stormwater utility, and you'll have a date for that, that'll, that'll happen at some point. September versus right around the corner.
And that'll be brought to this council.
Yeah, everything, right, everything will be brought to you, so, don't get home and say, whoa, there's no way we're gonna do it. We're not, that's not the intent, that, that's the first step of the ordinance for the components that are gonna be enacted upon at some time.
So, I found out the best way to work with I.D.M. is to work with I.D.M. and let them know what's going on constantly, so, that's, so I'm, you know, constantly talking around some of it, letting them know what things are, what things are going on, so...
And Mayor, to that, they're, they seem, Chase, they seem very satisfied with the open communication, so, they've been great. Stacy Goodwin is here, we're, this, this program goes to, uh, Nina, Lena, and Stacy Goodwin, and she's been here for...
What questions does Council have for Bobby or...
Yeah, any questions or later, we're gonna be back, so this won't be the ugly mug of a back this.
I, I just had one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Talking about, you were talking about the state having minimum standards, but we're gonna go up and beyond that.
Yes.
Were you guys, is that, do they, are they obligated to go up and bottom on that, or...
Once you have your ordinance in place, yes. So, the ordinance will spell that out, so, uh, as a, uh, you know, my, my, my firm, we, I have a proud development group, and that's, they do proud developments, Kroger Store, whoever, whoever comes in, I don't think I'm Kroger, anyone, any corporation comes in or any developer, we're gonna have a new ordinance at some point that says, here's your development standards, here's the things you have to follow. Yeah, yes, they'll have to follow those to get a, a construction permit, 'cause there'll, there'll be a permit process too, that was in, you know, before, until you get all these checks, it's just the exact same process, except the permits issued from I.D.M. for sanitary sewer. So, before anybody constructs an sanitary sewer line, Chase can say it internally, he can sign off on it, they can't go to construction until they get an I.D.M. permit. I mean, they have to have a construction permit from I.D.M. Same thing for stormwater, except the construction permit will come from your utility. But the same thing, is that any questions?
Good point.
Sorry.
Anyone else? Bobby, thank you so very much.
Thank you for listening to me and just putting up with all this, so, and if, if you quite, I know it's a lot to digest, so, follow me, any feedback's great, so, thank you.
As you read through it, you may be confused, we've always got a whole lobby of people.
Yeah, and, Dan, will you pass along my contact info too?
Yes, I will send back to them.
Okay, I'll send it along, I'm giving the power to, I figure if you send it...
I can send your email to them, okay, thank you for your help so far.
Yeah. I've got so many bags in these things. Nobody, you know...
All right, feel free to call me, email me.
Thank you, Bob, for your help on the budget especially, thanks for that.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you.
Next thing I want to do this evening is, uh, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash five, a resolution for the city of Scottsburg, Indiana, adopting the two thousand twenty-four Scotch County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Brought to you by the Wondol.
Hello, guys, I know most of you, I'm Jeremy McDaniel. Um, I've been on Scottsburg Fire Department for twenty-two years now. Um, I'm also now the county's, the mayor director. So, uh, every four years, uh, the county is required to do, update the multi-hazard mitigation plan. You take a look at what can happen, how bad it could be, things like that. We look at the stormwater runoff, we look at what it does to the flood, to the creeks, and how it affects floodplains. Um, we look at all that, we look at the risk of fire, the hazmat. You have a flash drive plugged in your computer, there's a couple hundred pages on there, I wasn't gonna waste a tree. Um, figured it'd be a lot easier for you guys to scroll through it on your computer when you were sitting at the kitchen table or reclining your climate. Um, but, uh, just to give you guys an idea, uh, what it does is we rank the hazards that could happen and may happen, uh, in the county, and, uh, right now, our number one risk is fire and lava fire, based on the committee that put this together. Um, second is a hazmat situation due to I sixty-five, thirty-one, the railroad, considering it is now hazmat certified, and, um, flood is number four. So, you know, your stormwater runoff can affect, uh, the creeks down, which we're working on the creeks, um, county level. Um, they're clearing a lot of them, they've got stuck a ditch, pretty well cleared out through the main Harley County, and now are working, uh, towards the tributary part at the Mescalatuck. Um, so those are just a few things we look at, we take a look at, uh, the fire departments, how busy they are. You know, just to give you an idea, numbers from two thousand twenty-two, Austin, Jennings Township ran two hundred and thirty-five runs. Uh, Johnson, hundred ninety-nine, Lexington, two hundred and ninety-seven, Scottsburg ran a hundred and seventy-four, or one thousand seventy-four calls per service. So, um, that goes into, you know, how many fires, we look at how many fires we have, based off of some of those runs and numbers. Um, and then, uh, we look at, uh, what we can do to mitigate those hazards. And, uh, so, through there, it's chapter five in your, in your book, we've got a list of, I believe it's eleven or twelve, eleven different things that we're working on as a county, um, to, uh, mitigate a lot of these things. And, uh, what the multi-hazard mitigation plan does is, it just lays a framework for us to, to try to make the county safer, um, from natural and random disasters. So, we're just asking that you agree to it. Um, we've just spent a little over twenty thousand dollars, I believe, we've sent together over the last couple of years, um, which, uh, we up our grant, it's okay, that's pretty good for, for people in Scott County. And, uh, we're just asking you to adopt it. Um, I'm not asking you to do anything else, it's really just saying, yes, we approve of what they say.
Gentlemen, that's Resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash five. So, uh, at this point, uh, we would accept the motion to adopt this as presented. I'm gonna motion, pardon me, make some motions, or a second? Do you have seconds? Right now's the time to ask questions, you have any questions about anything that Jeremy said? Comments? Hearing none, hold your seat, aye? Opposed? Yes, thank you. Pass it along, somebody just wondering, thank you, Jerry, you can see, right? Uh, the next thing is our public comment, period. The city of Scottsburg will accept public comments, individuals wishing to address the council they have to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion, work should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or linked officials. Is there anyone here today that would like to come forward? Boy, babe, let them!
Well, I'll start, I apologize for not having enough topics, but, um, Kathy and I were looking to pack an amendment to the ordinance twenty eighteen ten, the definition of Article Nine, or the off-road vehicles, to have golf carts. It would be under the same definition, basically, it's, they, uh, air flights, they have insurance, everything that's... Under that definition, except under Article Nine, golf cart is not listed as acceptable. We've been writing ours for about a year now, and, uh, we got pulled over the other day because it was a legal... So, I thought we...
I wasn't with you on that track.
I think the first thing, what does legal counsel say?
I mean, I've just been presented this, so, I'm not in a position to speak to this tonight, but that term is defined in Indian code, this council has no authority to redefine Indian code, so, I guess that's, so, into that story.
Right, right, well, yeah.
The Indian legislature has defined that, that word, so...
City, like Madison, when they're alive, they just pay a twenty-five dollar permit to the city.
That would be a completely different ordinance than what you, what you're questioning here.
Okay, so how do I, what's the proper legal terms to go through rather than this way?
So, this is a, one ordinance that addresses UTVs, so it would be, it's creating a totally different ordinance and bringing that to the table to address it that way. So, it would not be as simple as just amending a state statute definition, which this board has no ability to do.
So, we can just call Madison, find out what their ordinance looks like, nor is it really a bit of the world. And, and have them sit over here, and see if the council would like to do that, and not like to do that, so, I don't know, that would be the two things.
I think we need some more, because, especially on my tiny town, they drive them off the road to golf carts, and any kid don't even think nothing more, and then you get on Owen, uh, Owen and Sack, but that's three ways, they don't even stop, it's four ways out. I don't know how many of the apples hit people, 'cause it'll pay no darn thing to you. And that's what the police can't be everywhere, and I understand that, but I think, compared to not being responsible, somebody's gonna hit somebody, and somebody's gonna get sued, 'cause we're not taking care of this issue.
Sir, are you wanting an ordinance to allow them or...
I think we need the ordinance to tighten it up, where you have that rocket light, you have that engine, it's gotta make your, like every other vehicle has it.
Yeah, this state's Jeff, we have to stay team for off-road vehicle and have insurance and lights and everything, which...
We've essentially adopted a state statute and allowing UTVs, so, and, and there's something similar for golf carts, so, that, there's a similar mechanism to, to look at for golf carts, but this is, this will not be the, it wouldn't be as simple as amending U.S. ordinance, so...
But there are a lot of communities, like you said, several communities where you just pay a annual fee.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we expect this.
You might even have to go on Madison's website and look and see a date, yeah. If you need any help from my office, let me know, I'll see if I can come to you.
Chief, what's your issue?
I mean, if that's something you guys are wanting, maybe draft, I'd have more help to draft.
I wouldn't be opposed to it.
No, no, I wouldn't either.
So, it sounds like we've got three, Mark, you would, what would your approach be? That's why I'm gonna have the chief. I mean, if it's something that can be addressed like Madison does, I know when I'm over in Madison, I know they're quite a bit, I don't see any kids on, on that, I don't know what their ordinance is, but, uh, I kinda to, agree with Mr. Coles out there, that they probably need to have some type of insurance, and you need to have some type of licensed driver to be on it. You know, it should be part of the order.
So, that, I was telling you, so, I'm sure you might be able to say...
Mark, I've got a UTV and it's insured, you have four of this as well?
Yeah.
So, it's like, we have four that would like to have...
Yep, I'll draft one for next meeting.
Okay. Basically, the second, the fourth, Monday's a different one. All right, all right, sounds good. Hey, is this your last one? Yeah, we'll take the last one. No, that's all right. There you go. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, Jill, uh, what do you have on the seat?
That's the Code Enforcement Board, I'm not really sure if that's the proper term, if Josh would help me, but we just need the council to make an appointment for that board.
Has council, has council made a, a, an appointment for this board, for the code enforcement? We're having a three-person board, so we need...
I haven't heard any of any names.
She had a four.
No last word, did I?
No, we haven't, yeah.
Can, uh, can council have one for next week, next, next, uh, next week?
I want a three-person board.
Three-person, I just need one.
Where's the other two, the one in front?
I think we...
I like T. D. O. Cyber, he underneath the retard farming, now I think he'd be able to look at some of the structures and make sure they're not far down to anybody. He's not retired from the fire department, I think he'd be a good one on the board. He did all that firm training, I think he'd be a perfect candidate for that board, if you don't mind.
Well, you, you know, if that's your appointment, or you wanna take the time to talk through this thing, the next, the next meeting, make this appointment?
I think we should take time to, you know, to read, and that's something that...
Okay, what do we have as far as announcements? Jan, you have?
I have nothing.
We have Summer Music on the square this Saturday, here on First Street, so, I'd like to invite everybody down for, uh...
so I'd like to invite everybody down for a summer music program.
This Saturday?
This Saturday, we have two bands, we'll start at five, and the other one starting after that, so.
Who you got this weekend, Kevin?
We have Wasted Potential, and we have, they're made up from at least a few local members. And then we'll have Rumors, which they play a lot in Louisville, Jeffersonville area. They're one of the, probably one of the top five bands in that market, so they'll be a pretty good show.
That'd be great, that'd be great, thank you so very much. You're all big crowd, remember that. Yeah, yeah. What other announcements do we have? Chief, you got the toll bridge up yet?
Got what?
Nothing. You have any to work on?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Hear that? Jay, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Adjourn, thank you very much.